And Citizen Carson, we welcome you here. We welcome all the visitors. We welcome Cory from the television. Rian Seaborn, pleased to have you here with the press. Administration Jeff and our recorder Graham. We welcome you to this meeting and we will start with a word of prayer from Councilor Barnes, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet in our committee meeting and we're thankful to represent the people of Carson. Thankful for the blessings that we receive as we serve and pray that we will have the Spirit to guide us in the deliberations this evening, that the things that we do will be done in a spirit of fairness and good for the community. And we're grateful for the opportunity, once again, that we each have to serve and ask thy blessings to be with us now, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor Barnes. I have to go first. In, so that you're aware of this, I am Councilor Van Groot. I am the Deputy Mayor and the Deputy Mayor always chairs the CCW meetings. We have our Mayor Maggie Cronin sitting at the desk also. We recognize that our Bylaw Officer is in the delegation area, Mr. Lloyd Stewart. We appreciate him attending this meeting also. We have an addition, the minutes in front of you, or the agenda in front of you. Can I have a motion for the additions? Or there's no additions on the agenda at this time, so if I can have a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councilor P. Boyd, all in favor? Any opposed? None carried. We're pleased as a council to have this kind of a turnout as we prepare a bylaw for our cat bylaw. There's a lot of compassion, there's a lot of passion in pets, extremely concerning dogs and cats. This has come to fruition because of that passion for the animals, the innocence of the animals and what do we do with them. It's also come to fruition to this council because of the number of phone calls into the administration office to our Bylaw Officer, Mr. Stewart, in regards to cats running astray, getting into flower beds, making homes underneath decks and so forth and so on. And so, we as a council looked at doing a cat bylaw. It's been given to Mr. Stewart and to the administration to develop a bylaw, but our Mayor, in the transparency issue, want to open it up to the public. This is an important bylaw and we recognize that. And it's gone through the first reading so that we can start on the process of developing a bylaw. The bylaw is not, it has not been determined, it has not been drafted, it has not been put into motion yet. We've only had a first reading. This allows for this public input and we appreciate that. Council is very pleased with the number of people who turned it out tonight. We certainly are pleased that Sherri is here tonight and her taking part in this process. Her organization does a lot with the small animals in our community. And Sherri, we want to recognize you for the work that you do and we're waiting to hear from your, from you. Now, the rules of the game, and I'm going to alter them a little bit. Hopefully, the Mayor will not correct me on this. I can stand to be corrected. But the rules of the game are is if you won't be heard by council, you send a letter into our administration and with that letter and that correspondence, then you're recognized and you're put on the, on the agenda package. And that's supposed to be done previously to this, to this meeting. However, a lot of people don't understand that type of a circumstance. So as the Chairman of this meeting, any of you who has their name on this, on this list as a delegation would like to speak to council, I will allow that. Even if your correspondence come in today at 2:00 or 2:30, I, we still want to hear from you. Your voice is important to us and we want you to know that. So, I'm going to start out by recognizing Mrs. McDonald in the Home Safe Animal Rescue. She'll be our first delegation. Now, Albert Schindler, he's not here tonight. Janice Nelson, I see Janice here tonight. Heather Anderson, is Heather here?
Oh, sorry. Cue me on that one. I was just on the phone with her. She won't be here tonight. They've run into some vehicle troubles, so I talked to her about potentially we could accommodate her a later date if she still has some information she wants to bring forward. So she was satisfied with that and I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you. Don Collins, is Don here? Great, Don. Neil Turner, Neil's here. Camver is not. Elaine, is Elaine Hall here?
Councilor Van Groot, I'm going to hop up and down just to make sure she's downstairs. I'll check in and out with her a little bit.
Okay. Tia White. Tia, good Tia. And Tia, I appreciate you coming to our council. You sent us a real nice information package and I appreciate that as I look over your slide presentations and so forth. And Melody Wood, Melody is, Melody is here? Now, is there other people who would like to speak to council?
Maybe.
Maybe?
If, if what I have a concern about is already presented, then I will.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Now, council, is it all right if what I have done with the presentations, is that all right that we allow those people to address the council? Is it in your favor?
I would say so.
Yeah, thank you very much. When Jeff gets back, Jeff is our new CAO, so that you're aware of it, he's been put into that position and he comes to us with, we're fantastic about it. I'm going to ask Jeff to make the presentation before the U. delegates start doing your presentation. When you do your presentation, I'm going to ask that you don't repeat something that somebody else has said. Let's, and if, if somebody else has said it and you don't need to say it, then let's not take up the time. And then, if we, if council has some questions for you, would you allow us to ask you questions? Because I'm going to open that up so that, so that our council is fully aware of what's Rian, would you like to address the council on anything from your case?
Thank you.
Good. Now, is there any questions for the council right at the present time from the delegations? Okay. Yes, Andy?
I would like to reserve the right to speak if there are things that I feel from a professional point of view have bearing on.
And Dr. Strang, that will give you, I'll give you a chance at the, at the end. How does that sound? So, council, if you'll put on a case, Dr. Strang?
As a presenter.
Pardon me? Is that rowdy?
Yeah.
If, 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 if there's something that isn't addressed, maybe just before Dr. Strang. Now, we had two, two young ladies come in just lately.
They're not speaking, council.
They're not speaking, council. Jeff, I'd like to turn the time over to you then, if you'd be able to preambulate what's happening with, with everything and where we sit at this point in time. Okay, please.
Thank you, Counselor. So, very briefly, there's not much for me to discuss prior to the delegations. Council's seen this once. You've given a first reading to put on the table. You saw in your background, we tweaked a couple very, very minor grammatical pieces that we just found in rereading the, the first revision. And of course, there was no need for substantial change until I have some public input. So, you will see in your background or in the document, there's, there's probably five or six small grammatical tweaks that we made to it just for clarity and some definition clarity and a few things like that that we can discuss further if council wishes later on. Other than that, that's all we've done to it since you've seen it last. So, we have nothing else to present there.
Question, Councilor P. Boyd. Could you just go over for us again, just review the, maybe it might be better to delegate that, just kind of with the situation that would lead to putting a cat down in this town?
Essentially, I guess it would be incurable disease. Anything else, Lloyd, under that?
Yeah. It's the only time we would impose that.
I have to find the exact spot in the draft because I guess one thing to remember too and for everyone in the audience, we've always had an animal control bylaw. So for, I'd have to guess it years, but let's say 20 years for lack of a better number, we've always had an animal control bylaw. Some of you may recall, a few months ago, we, we established a standalone dog bylaw to deal with some aggressive dogs and a couple of those issues we had and made some tweaks and put it as a standalone. So this was a follow-up that we'd taken basically all the dog stuff out of the animal control bylaw. So this is taking mostly what's existed for a lot of years and putting it into a standalone cat bylaw. And this gives us the opportunity to have some public input into making it work for the community and addressing some concerns like Councilor Van Groot said, that have come up since it's been reviewed last. So, the, just one second here, Councilor P. Boyd, to your point.
Sorry, it's 23.
Thanks, Mr. Strang. So yeah, basically, it just gives what would have to be the process to do it, but my suggestion would be that historically and right now, our condition would be that there would be some type of incurable disease that wouldn't be well to move that on to another, other animals or people, but that's the only thing that really sticks out to me. So, as council knows and for the benefit of the audience, we haven't euthanized animals as the means of disposing of them for some time, my whole time here. I can't speak to hell when before that, but at least in the seven years I've been around, I know the whole time that Lloyd's been with us, that's kind of been the case. So, it's not something we deal with very often. We've got these good agencies that have always been willing to pick up animals that have been abandoned, so that's always been helpful. And, so, so I didn't, I don't have a big criteria of all the reasons we would.
You would agree then that the town of Carson adheres to a pretty strict no-kill policy? With the exception of?
Even a man with feet on the ground, I would use.
I had that in my agenda here, I was going to mention that. Since I've started this position, I went, I actually went to a meeting up in Lethbridge, I think it was Lethbridge, wasn't it Sherri?
Yeah.
Five or six years ago?
That's where, yeah.
And we talked about a no-kill policy and it was developed and we adhere to it since.
That's great. That's commendable.
Any other questions for our CAO? Okay, then, Jeff, I thank you for that. Lloyd, would you like to address us with, with some of your items?
My throat's a little sore, so I'll just.
A little water, Lloyd?
No, I've had strips all over the weekend, so I'm still suffering a little.
I'm not offering mine.
Is it incurable, Lloyd?
No, I'm just kidding. I've got some facts and figures here from the, from the last four years that may be interesting to the council and to the audience here. In 2011, there were 119 dogs and 137 cats captured. Of the 119 dogs, 62 were returned to the owners. Of the 137 cats, only 31 were returned to owners. In 19, or 2012, there were 100 dogs and 131 cats. 57 of the dogs were returned, so more than half were returned. Only 13 of the cats were returned to the owners, were claimed by the owners. If I knew who the owners were, I would have done a little more, would work on it. In 2013, there was 82 dogs and 82 cats, strangely enough, the same number. However, 50 of the dogs were claimed and only eight of the cats were claimed. So 10% of the cats were claimed. And the year before that was even less. In this past year, there was 107 dogs, 38 which were claimed, and 94 cats, only seven of which were claimed. And just as a point of interest, the total number of dogs removed from Carson in that four-year period was 102, the number of, or pardon me, 201, this is hard to explain. The number of cats that were removed from the town of Carson was 286. In that same thinking in the back of my mind, because I know where there's cats, especially cats that are being fed outside, there are skunks, box, raccoons, all kinds of wildlife that come into town. There were a, 164 skunks caught in town in a four-year period. I think it's important that you're aware that there is no law stopping citizens from, from trapping cats, skunks, or other domestic animals on their own land in Carson. However, I have, have no record of how many there may be and, because of course they're not going to come to me and say, hey, I caught 50 cats and I got rid of them for you, because they know what my response is going to be to them. Under the Animal Protection Act, however, no person is allowed to set a trap for any kind of animal without checking it at least once every 24 hours. And just this last week, two weeks, we had somebody set up a trap on somebody's property who was away.
Went away for two weeks, yeah.
They were away on, on vacation. They'd actually asked me to set up a trap and I didn't set one because I knew they were going to be away for the weekend, so I was going to go Monday and set it up. And I get a call on Saturday or Sunday saying, hey, somebody's caught a cat and they're not doing anything with it, they're just leaving it there. So it was surrendered to Sherri who brought it to the pound and it was eventually sent up to a, who was it, the?
ARPS.
ARPS retrieved it on, on this last week. So just to let you know that people can catch animals and do with them what they may, but they shouldn't be doing it without making sure that they're doing it in a humane way. I mean, I've actually had the SPCA come to Carson and ask me how I was getting rid of the skunks and I told them how. And they said, well, that's not very humane. I says, well, what do you suggest? He says, I suggest you shoot them. I says, have you ever shot, tried to shoot a skunk in an enclosed trap? The only hole that's in the trap is this big. I says, that's pretty hard to shoot a skunk in an enclosed trap. I says, besides that, I'd have to take it out of town because you're not allowed discharge firearm in town. But you said, okay, you're right, that's the most humane way you, that you're doing it. That is the ground. And I know that sounds cruel and unusual to some people, but it's the most humane way we could come up with with the SPCA.
Just as an aside, the last Bylaw Officer that we had that did shoot a skunk got shot first by the skunk, terribly.
Well, I've been shot by a skunk, you can ask anybody that works in the office here. They know when I pick up a skunk, even if it's already dead. So it's not just by shooting, but you did spray, I guarantee you. Is there any other questions for me at this time?
A high number of cats and dogs that never got, well, mostly the cats that never got returned, 90%, where did they go?
They go to, we have different, we have ARPS and we have Animal Rescue Foundation. We have, there's, there's a variety. I actually have a set group that I send out emails to and say, I have these animals, are you interested in them? We had one lady, she came down and got a dog and a cat on Friday and then another group came, our association came down and picked up a puppy that had been left.
Where are these groups, just for everybody's knowledge, where are they located?
Calgary.
Ian Calgary?
Calgary, Claire's Home, there's, there's.
Okahtokes.
Okahtokes, Lethbridge, Lethbridge, the, the animal shelter in Lethbridge will take animals if they're know for absolutely sure, and I don't mean to offend anybody here, that they know absolutely for sure that the dog is not from the reserve. And that's the only way they'll take.
Next question then to you folks. Are they mostly adopted out, the animals that you guess?
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Good. Good to hear.
We have several different programs up there.
Any other questions for Mr. Stewart? Thank you, Lloyd. It's, it's for sure from the stats that Lloyd has given us, let's just do the review of the 2013, 2014 on the cat situation. 82 cats captured, eight returned, and 94 in 2014 and seven returned. Responsibility, you know, cat owners, where does it fall? And that's, and that's why we're developing this, this bylaw. Sherri, on behalf of council, Mayor and council, I want to thank you for the organization that you have, your contact people, people who take animals and do something. That's extremely important. We all have a passion for, for animals regardless of what they are. And I have a strong passion for, for small animals and I appreciate Sherri, your organization and the other people in this delegation, in this, in this room, who are responsible pet owners. And that is a big thing, to be a responsible pet owner. So Sherri, without further accord, I'd like to invite you up to address the council. I'm going to give each delegation five minutes. And like I said, if there's something that somebody else has said, I'll ask you to not retweet those things. So Sherri, you're first. Yes, if you'd step up to the, look at my, this is great, I'm trying to.
Councilor Van Groot, Mayor Cronin, Cronin our mayor and fellow council members. First, let me say, when we formed in 2000, one of the very first calls we got was from our dear Councilor Van Groot. This is wonderful. And he, he had a situation, remember Sneak? He had a beautiful short hair, white, blue-eyed cat who had become a situation in his family that they needed to rehome this kitty. So we phoned me, surrendered her. She was in our home for four days and she never left. We loved her, she became part of our family. But thank you, Brother Van Groot, for doing the right thing. You found help for her. You didn't, as some people do, just abandon her or just send her anywhere. I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come speak to you today about the proposed changes to the Carson bylaw. As there are several bylaws I would like to comment on, and time does not allow, I will focus on the one that alarms me the most right now, to stop feeding feral and community cats and a fine being enforced for doing so. Where and who came, who came up with that? Are you thinking to stop feeding and it's going to make them disappear? It won't. That doesn't happen. That's been proven that that does not happen. That is just simply inhumane and cruel. Feral cats are territorial animals who can survive for weeks without food and will not easily forthfully leave their territory to search out any new food sources. Instead, instead, they tend to encroach closer into human habitations as they grow hungrier and more hungrier and more desperate. Their malnourished condition will make them more susceptible to horrible and a lonely life of a feral cat. The cats will also continue to reproduce despite the attempt to starve them out, resulting in the visible deaths of many kittens. As a result, feeding bans, if enforced, tend to make the situation much worse instead of improving it. The TNR, TNR neuter, trap neuter release program that can help with the cat overpopulation problem, that's, that's the thing that can help us in Carson, is the TNR trap neuter release. And really, this is something that your local animal rescue group with the help of fellow animal rescues has been working at for several years. So hopefully, I hope I'm going to try and take the time, I just want you to know a little history of how we came up with this. In 2009, a local resident up in the East Hill, an elderly gentleman called me with a plea for help. During the winter, he had noticed a couple of cats around his yard and noticing that they didn't look into good shape, they must be hungry, he started throwing scraps at them. He was a kind old soul with a compassionate heart and he found it was becoming too much for him and expensive as he started to buy food for them. Unknowingly, he had built up a little colony of cats. He was, he just kept putting food out for them as they showed up. And his healthcare care nurse, Kathy Jensen, actually gave me a call about it as well as she was worried about him. He was about 80 then. I went to meet this street man and I looked over the situation. I loved this dear man upon meeting him. I could see that he indeed needed help, but so did the cats. He was not in good health and I could see that him bending over to feed them was very dangerous. I made arrangements for him to take over the feeding and, and. Camila walked up there every day to take care of his cats until we met a lady who offered to help us, which she did until she moved from Carson. Shortly after, we met an animal lover, Janice Nelson, who learned about, excuse me, us and offered to help. The three of us continued to trek up there until Cam moved to Leecrest. And then a friend, Don Collins, joined us and we have put in a lot of miles, time, years and work in caring for our little group of ferrets. Long story short, we needed help. The numbers got away from us. We called an animal rescue friend who had been helping us since we started out like friends, Palm Rescue, ARPS, Bay Neuter Task Force, Elizabeth, and then ARPS, they have a really big heart. Elizabeth Gin from the Last Chance Capera and Jane Nygaard took a weekend in 2011 and did the first trapping for us. One of the most heartbreaking, sad, depressing things I have ever been involved in, ever. So traumatic and horrifying and terrifying for the cats. Not only did we rip them from their homes, but also from each other. And they were family, they were bonded. It was horrible and something I never wanted to do again. I have since learned that. The TNR program is one of the most humane ways of helping feral cats and I'm so grateful for the good people, the fellow rescue groups who have come forward to help us with their guidance and direction to our little community in Carson. I appreciate them and love them so much. I had a printer problem here, so, please excuse me. I had an emergency, emergency phone with my computer. This is just, I'm sorry, it's mayor. This trapping that we did, this, the first time we did, we trapped 22 adult cats that we came, 22 that we took out of the yard and several kittens. Elizabeth took them all into Lethbridge, knowing we had no funds or place to care for them until they were all could be vetted. She took care of it all and found a place in Red Bird that was set up for feral cats. She transferred them all safely there herself. She took on the veterinary fees for all these cats. They were all bay neutered and cat-toed and shots given. Plus, plus caring for the kittens until they could be adopted. It cost her over $2,000. As it was the mayor at the time who said that he wanted the cat problem on the hill taken care of, she did send the town an invoice and a letter, but they never responded. Never, she never, she wasn't acknowledged or thanked at all. We were able over time to reimburse her less than half. As a couple of cats were left behind because we never could trap them and we tried, the problem has resurfaced and we have been working really. problem has resurfaced, and we have been working really hard to get on top of it, and will continue to do so until it's done. We, we want all to be safe and happy, cats, residents, and ourselves. Am I done?
Your, your.
Can I just say?
Yes, you can.
Mayor Cronin, council members, I don't know if this is going to be the consequence or importance at all with the decisions that you'll be making in the next little while. But I just want you to know that I will not, and I cannot, because of who I am. I will not, I can't, I, well, I will not stop feeding the feral cats. Today is my day to feed, and I will head up there when this is done, at the point of usual time to feed, the cats will, one by one, come out, party to meet me, as they know us as well as we know them. I would request that our town put some compassion in action and throw out this proposed inhumane, terrible bylaw. Thank you for your time, I'm trusting that you do the right thing.
Thank you, Sherry.
They know them, they all have names, they're little souls to us, they're not just animals.
Thank you, Sherry, and it's for this compassion that you show, that we welcome this type of public input into developing this bylaw. And again, we thank you for the efforts that you do for our community.
Thank you.
Janice Nelson, please.
Mayor Cronin and council, my name is Janice Nelson, I've lived in Carson for well over forty years. I have always loved animals, but the last four years I've been involved with Sherry, and one of the things I would like to say right now is, most of those animals that we are feeding now have been spayed and neutered by us. Years ago, we had quite a number of kittens born that got up the respiratory, which is quite common with kittens, and we lost a lot of them. Last year, we only had two batches of kittens born, we were able to catch all of them and to familiarize them with people and send them up to one of the rescues in Calgary. So that we're not just randomly feeding and allowing them to reproduce, we, we have a plan, we're very short on money, but we do have a plan. One of my concerns with the larger fines and paying, especially for spay neutered animals, paying a lot more amounts, is I'm afraid that it's going to increase our numbers of homeless animals rather than decrease, because I have talked to some people that believe they haven't got the funds to, to pay some of the rising fees, and I think that would be a real shame. Also, we, we are very small, but we have a couple of people that foster for us, and they are afraid to foster for us, because they don't want to get maybe a find, and I think that's a shame. Because a lot of the fosters are here for a period of time, and then they do go to Calgary, but sometimes it is a period of time before we can find a spot for them, because the bunch in Calgary are absolutely awesome, but sometimes it takes them a little while to find a space. Okay, now, feral cats. Feral cats, in my opinion, have had a bad name for a very long time. Luckily, in a lot of communities, that is changing. In some countries, they literally have sanctuaries, where people, they're all spayed, neutered, they're all vetted, and volunteers go in and feed them. St. Thomas, Mexico, some of these places, it, it is true, it's really happening. Medicine Hat has sent us a huge paper, which we haven't been able to go through completely, but there are some real answers to a lot of your concerns that you have in your bylaws. We haven't had a chance to go through, but we would like to let you see it, because there's some really good stuff in there.
We sent it to Jeff, please go.
Oh, good, okay, good. Okay, one of my concerns too is, one of the things I love about Carson is the open spaces we have. Like, it is not unusual to see a deer or a rabbit, and I think this is good, but there is also mice, and if all of the cats in our communities are gone, I think some of the people are going to have a real problem, especially in one area where we feed, where it's quite run down, and there's old vehicles, and there's lots of grass that hasn't been cut, and so on, and I believe that they will be a plague. I also believe that, not a plague literally, but way too many, way too many mice, and I also believe that some animals, of course, can climb, but if you do have your feeding stations up, that will eliminate the skunk problem, because skunks can't climb. And, you know, foxes and raccoons perhaps are the, we've never seen raccoons around here myself, like, not saying that they're not here. They do need to be properly maintained, and with the trap neuter and release program, they have added an MPA, which is for monitoring, so that we're not just going to dump them, we will do what we can. Now, I know people in this community that literally have had their, their feral animals spayed and neutered with their own money, because they believe in that cause, and they believe that properly handled, it, it could work. But I do believe that the citizens and the council and animal rescue need to work together, and I think some of these laws are really scaring our citizens. They are afraid to, that their own personal animals, even their license are going to be picked up, and that is a concern. I know a lot of them voiced to me that if their, a neighbor came and said that their animal was messing on their lawn, they'd be more than happy to clean it up, but you do, you know, you need to know about that. And I do believe, again, that we're not in an urban area where the houses are side by side and no outdoor spaces. I believe that we have room for animals, they have to be controlled, and it's not going to happen overnight, but I do believe that it can. And so in closing, I would like to say that as a human being, and as a Christian, I believe it is my obligation to do what I can for the homeless in our community, and that includes the four-legged ones. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jan. Heather Anderson, please, Daisy Foundation.
She's not here, councilor.
She's not here. Okay, Dawn Collins.
Hi, Mayor and council, my name's Dawn Collins, and I've been working with Sherry for approximately three years now. I'm not only a member of that association, I'm also a volunteer and a foster mom. And I'd like to talk a little bit, I went through your bylaw, piece by piece, and so my, my comments are more geared directly to what's written in the bylaw as it stands now. First of all, the ferals that we take care of are well-fed, as the other lady said, they are the least likely to get into garbage. They are opportunists though, and they will get into a garbage if it's already broken into. I think you need to look at birds, and dogs, and people. People need to have their garbage in garbage cans with lids. Feeding ferals does not necessarily bring in animals from the, the outline areas. I have literally seen box trotting down the sidewalk on Main Street, and I'm talking about right downtown. Obviously, they're quite at home in Carson, and they're very adaptable, so, but concerning the area that I help to feed, we have only had, in that entire time that I've been feeding with Sherry and, and Janice, we've only had three skunks. And we do feed on the ground, but it's in a sheltered area, we have a camper topper for pickup truck, so that they can, they can be sheltered while they're eating. And I can tell then, the skunks have even just gotten into the, into the feeding area, because you can tell that the dishes are thrown everywhere and that. And I have managed to, I have managed to replace or rehome those skunks without getting sprayed. And I'm known for that.
You're a skunk lady.
I'm a skunk lady.
She teaches Lloyd how to do that.
Oh, I know, I can teach this to her too. All of our, all of our animals are also tattooed, the ferals that we take care of, so they will get notified by, usually it's ARCs that take care, that help us. So they have tattoos, numbers that they give out, and so they are identified as ARCs animals. But every year, we have cats coming in, only one or two, and we have some that leave. We always clean up any of the new ones, we, we trap them and take them away right away, get them spayed and neutered and released. And so we're pretty stable at about twelve cats in, in that feral colony. Right now. Okay, part of the problem with identifying females as a, as a difficulty, causing all the problems with the feral cats, it's indicated in, in the wording now that your, if you let your cat out that's in heat, then you can be found. I'm sorry, but you can't tell a cat's in heat from when watching it cross the road. You can't even identify the sex when they cross the road. So the difficulty doesn't center around just the females. You were also interested in avoiding all the, the noise, the cat screaming and the fighting and all of that. It's the toms that do that, they are the instigators. So not only females have to get fixed, toms have to get fixed. They fight, they smell, they have a very distinctive odor, and they do the loud howling. So it's, any pet that isn't spayed or neutered and is left outside indicates a problem with the owners, if indeed it does have an odor. And we should help the people to take care of their pets. Calgary actually has a spay neuter program for low-income people, and that has actually assisted them in reducing the numbers of feral and stray cats. I think that some of the employees that have been designated to handle the animals or to make decisions, they should definitely receive more training. There shouldn't be fines that, that are assessed for not fixing an animal when that animal is of insufficient age or weight or illness, and they cannot be fixed. Accurate information should be kept on all the animals. Our volunteer groups currently clear the pound of animals, actually on a weekly basis, so right now, we're talking about purchasing animals. Are these groups going to have to pay to clear these animals out of the pound?
Not in the business of selling animals.
No. Five animal limit for rescue workers is not sufficient. These requirements fluctuate. If I, if every foster home has five cats in it, and the sixth one comes walking along, what are we going to do? Nope, sorry, we're full, go away. We can't do that. And I have fostered, as far as people getting permission to foster cats, I have fostered, and you, you have, Neil, you have, you live right beside me, I have fostered thirteen cats, and I don't think you've even known that I've been fostering cats. You can't hear anything, you can't smell anything, you can't do, I mean, it just doesn't happen. They're caged, they're kept clean, and they're fed. And so these are important things to remember, and also for statistics, this, the TNR, the trap neuter release, has been proven to reduce the number of feral and stray cats. It's been proven, so I would really appreciate it if the council would consider this and look into some of the statistics. Off the internet, the other, just today, I pulled off back sheets about it, and there's also a large document, Cats in Canada, where they've surveyed, and it has a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn, thank you for your work as a volunteer.
Commissioner Van Groot.
Yes.
Just, just so you know, just for Dawn, I have her information, all the points she brought up, you just don't have it yet, so you'll have it in correspondence for next week's agenda, but it will be forthcoming.
Neil Turner.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I don't have a book, a book full of statistics. It's just areas my statistics. After the winter of 2013, 14, I cleared one and a half buckets full of cat poo from my yard. This side bucket. Unfortunately, as Dawn pointed out, I live between two ladies who feel it incumbent on them to feed the local cat population. They use my yard as the toilet. Janice, I appreciated your points, and I feel a little like King Agrippa, almost how convert us me to be a cat person. I understand that people love animals, I've owned pets in the past myself, I have no desire to harm them, although in an argument with Melody, my other neighbor, I did threaten to shoot the next one that came in my yard. It got to that point. I honestly don't know the answers, but I would like you to understand some of the problems that they bring, and I think you do understand them. Dawn mentioned the three skunks that she, that she has seen. I must be the luckiest person alive, if she's only had three skunks, I saw all three of them.
There's a entire family sitting there.
I saw all three of them. And it's not nice when, when you can't keep your windows and doors out during the summer, because there are cats wandering up onto the doorstep to feed, uh, skunks wandering up onto the doorstep to feed. Like, as I said, I really don't know the answers, I just want you to know some of the problems. We've called Mr. Stewart, our bylaw officer, several times to try and help us. He has caught both cats and skunks on our property, and I'm pleased to hear that they are getting rehoused, the cats are getting rehoused anyway, not the skunks, but I'm pleased to hear that the cats are getting rehoused, do appreciate that, and appreciate the work that's being done in that. But again, I do want you to consider some of the problems that those of us who aren't as involved with cats face because of the wandering in cats from, from other areas. I know Dawn, you had one particular problem with one big gray cat, couldn't catch it, tried several times, and I don't know how many liters of cats or kittens that cat had in the meantime.
It's been, that whole population has been.
That's gone out, I understand that, but it took such a long time to be done, and we suffered the consequences. And just so you know, it's not just about the cats. As I pointed out to one of my neighbors, when I'm trying to clean up the cat poo, my grandkids can't play in the yard, I don't want them covered in cat poo. When I go to dig my garden, and I pull the weeds, guess what, I usually end up sticking my fingers in. It's not pleasant, it's not nice, and I don't appreciate my yard being a toilet for a population of cats. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, for having the willingness to stand up and share some of the different side of the story, the other side of the story. We appreciate that. Melody Wood, please.
Oh, Mrs. Al is here too, by the way.
Yes.
That's okay, she can go first.
Oh, and you got Tia White here as well.
I would like to reserve Tia for the last, please, if I could. Elaine, would you, would you address the council from where you're sitting? It's pretty hard for you to stand with this.
I'm just careful, give me a hand up, chairs are too low.
I'll take this over.
I'll take this one.
Elaine, we're willing to let you sit on that chair and address us, if it'd be.
Just a chair for you, you'll there.
Chair, then I can see. Okay.
Elaine, you came in late, I'd like to give you about five minutes if you, if you need that.
I'll get five minutes?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Then I'll cut you off.
That's good. Okay, I've read through your, all your bylaws, and it seems like you're really concerned with feral cats and stray cats running around town, and people putting food out for them, and getting into garbage and all these things. Now, there wouldn't be any stray cats and feral cats. Now, there wouldn't be any stray cats and feral cats if people... And I know because my neighbors have done this. If people would take care of their cats when they leave town, renters moved away down the road, left the cat, another person moved from up the street, moved away, left three cats. So, now, we have... Two were missing, there was one left, so we got them, so we're taking care of them. Now, I don't think feral cats are that bad because I found a cat one night, and it was at my door, and it was cold and snowing, and so I gave him some food, gave him some water, and that cat comes back at night now, every night, to eat, and that's... They come to eat and to drink, and we take care of them. But feral cats, I picked him up, one little kitten off the street, and somebody left it there because, I don't know why, and there it was, and it couldn't eat, it couldn't do anything. So, my neighbor and I, Jean Todd, we said, "We've got to do something." So, we started the Cartston Animal Welfare Society, and through that time, we picked up many feral cats, dogs, everything, and through Animal Rescue Foundation in Calgary, we were able to find homes for all of these cats and dogs and everything. I don't think it's the feral cats that are bothering anybody that much. But... And I've got a thing here that you said, "Running at Large Clause." So, what does that mean? You can't have your cats go outside and run at large? You can't? Cats like to go outside and run outside. So, John is going to fix our fence at the back and make it higher so they can go to the back, and they won't jump, and they won't run at large. And then, I like your clause about grandfather cats, if you have an older cat, and then you can... I don't know what it is exactly, but the grandfather clause means you can maybe have more cats, like when you brought in the licenses. Well, we had a cat that was 17 years old. He died at 19. And I like your clause about the grandfather cats and the one... Oh, I don't have it right here, I just can't find it. But I just read through everything, and you seem to be punishing the people who are out on the street, taking care of the cats, like Sherry and those two people, and I did, and my neighbor, Jean Todd, somebody you remember her? You seem to be punishing us because we're going out finding cats and helping them out, and if they're hungry at night, they come to our house. So, we're going to get punished and maybe fined because this little cat is hungry and we're going to feed him. I don't think you should be punishing us. You should be punishing the neighbor next door that, like, I know, left their dog out in the rain, out in the snow, left their cats outside, and wouldn't let them in the house. And when she moved, we ended up with one. I don't know where the other two went to. But I think that more clauses should be put in your bylaws against people that abuse cats and don't take care of them properly. And if you could find out, like, somebody moved and they left their cats behind, get a hold of them and say, "Okay, you've left your cats behind." You know, there'll be a hundred-dollar fine because you left your cats behind, now we have to take care of them. I feel that for people that are trying to help the cats on the street and just trying to do a good job of it, they shouldn't be punished. How about, "We don't need to be honored, we don't need a reward, we don't need to be honored," but we don't need to be punished because Sherry's been telling me how she's going up to feed the stray cats. John has driven her up there and fed them, and so... But we don't need honoring, we just need for you to accept what we're doing and say, "Okay, now, you know, do it in a good fashion, good way," and then that is good. But I'm so glad that finally, Mr... Oh, what was his name? The teacher that was the mayor? Hardy. Finally, Mr. Hardy, after about 100 years in this town, there was never a decent pound. And one lady told me that pound that they used to have, there was just terrible what she heard coming from there. And finally, Mr. Hardy and his councilman built a pound and made it suitable and had somebody look after it. So, now, you don't have to worry about where are they going to go because you can call Mr. Stewart. And I have called him and told him. So, I think that if you're going to punish, like, Sherry and her little group that's trying to help cats, or me, because I feed them on the street, that that's not right. I think we need to do more to help each other to with this problem. And if there are stray cats, I know some real good farmers, feral cats, I know some real good farmers that have built buildings on their farm, have a place for them, and they take these cats out on the farm, and they'll feed them and take care of them, pick them up. I just heard, in B.C. I don't know the name of the town, but in B.C., they're picking up all the feral cats in that town, they're going to have them spayed and neutered, and then they're going to find them a home. But they're not going to euthanize them. There's no reason to euthanize them because they have no home and they have nobody.
Thank you.
So, you know, you can look it up on your computer, what town it is in B.C., but they are going to take care of them by picking them up and getting them home.
Thank you, Elaine.
So, this is all... I've got lots more to say, but I've written you a letter, so you can read it.
Elaine, you came a little bit late, but we discussed the fact that in our town, we do not euthanize cats.
Yeah, well, you don't.
No, we don't.
We don't.
And Elaine, on the lighter side, I live just up the street from you.
Yeah.
If I show up on your doorstep, will you make me a toasted tomato bacon sandwich every night and a bowl of ice cream?
I will.
Every night.
I will.
Thanks, Elaine.
I'll make you one for tomorrow night.
I'll give Counselor Bangery.
You know, it's not something that I just picked up off the street. Jean Todd and I did this for a year, and I know what things are going through, so...
Thank you, Elaine.
Can I just stay here?
Yeah, you can stay right there.
Melody? Would you like to address the... No, I wanted to get you Tia for the end.
I have one question.
But with the SPCA, you decided that day he came down that you're going to keep them for so many hours and euthanize them. You don't have to.
No, we don't.
Okay, Melody, you got the floor.
Okay, some of this has been covered, so I'll just try and...
Speak up. I have a little bad ear.
Okay, this is... Some of this has been covered, so I'll try to edit, just kind of touch on things. Raising the fee to $15 for the altered cats, I think will only discourage more people from licensing their cats. People with limited incomes can't afford to pay this fee, and especially for somebody that has strictly indoor cats, the fee increases, is too much. Another question I'd like to pose is, how many people actually license their cats if they are not fixed? My guess is probably not a whole lot. It might be better to tell them to keep the $35 and put it towards getting their cat fixed. That way, we have problems... That's why we have problems with stray cats is because people don't get their cats fixed, and it creates more stray cats. Which brings me to the second point, there will always be stray animals in Cartston, that's just a fact of life. There's no way that the bylaw officer could possibly pick up all the stray cats in the area. So, why punish the good people who want to feed these strays rather than watch them die of starvation? As an example, my neighbors had an unaltered cat that was strictly an outdoor cat they never fed. Because it was an altered, it had three sets of kittens, and it was when they had the third set... When it had the third set of kittens that my neighbors decided to move away and left the cats and kittens behind. Am I supposed to let a mom cat and her kittens starve because of the uncaring attitude of some people? Unfortunately, this is not an uncommon occurrence. I was hoping that this didn't apply to Sherry and all the work that she does, because I know they are unfounded and unrecognized most of the time, and I know she can't do it all herself. So, if some of the people want to feed the cats on their private property, I don't see why, any reason, any reason why they should not be allowed. There will always be irresponsible pet owners in Cartston, so there will always be stray animals. I hope the town reconsideres banning more private people from caring for these animals.
Thanks, Melody. I've left Tia White near the end, and there's a reason for that.
Why is that a question?
Tia comes to us from Lethbridge with the No Kill Animal Association. She sat on the Animal Welfare Committee with the city of Lethbridge, and so, Tia, I'm waiting to hear from you. I did your total printout, and I appreciate reading through it. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Tia White, and I'm on the City of Lethbridge Animal Welfare Committee. I also work with NOCA. I'm here today to provide information as to why feeding bad has not a good idea, but more importantly, I would like to provide you with some alternatives for such problems.
Tia, you speak way faster than I do.
Sorry, I've only got five minutes, so this is time for you.
Just so you know, Tia, just so you know, they have all that information you submitted to.
Okay.
So, the slides and all of the background documentation, so if that helps.
Okay, then I will... You already know that feeding bad laws are going to work, the cats are going to move closer to businesses, they're going to search for food harder, and starving them out is just incredibly inhumane, so I'll skip half of this. My recommendations to council are as follows: Increasing public education regarding acceptable cat ownership; Controlling the cat population through mandatory spay or neuter policies and a trap neuter return program; And implementing lower impound fees to increase attributable credentials. For example, Tabor has a subsidized spay and neuter program that has been in place for at least 12 years with much success. It began with $5,000 yearly and may have their budget increased or decreased as needed. Trap neuter and release is the number-one solution and the most humane compassionate approach. TNR solves common complaints associated with feral cats because, when feral cats are trapped, neutered, and released to their territory, they no longer reproduce. When the colony is then monitored by a caretaker who removes or alters any newly arrived cats, the population stabilizes and gradually declines over time. The cessation of sexual activity eliminates the noise associated with mating behavior and dramatically reduces hiding and the noise it causes. Foul odors are greatly reduced as well because neutered male cats no longer produce testosterone, which, when they are unaltered, mixes with their urine and causes a strong pungent smell of their spring. Neutered feral cats will grow much less and become less visible and less prone to injury from tars. Above and beyond a TNR program, you can educate and empower residents by providing information on how to humanely keep cats out of their yards while encouraging compassion towards feral cats. The best alternatives for residents involved are laying down chicken wire over gardens will deter cats from walking and urinating in the area. Cats can also be kept away humanely with a popular and safe Mr. McGregor fence. You can use water in humane ways as repellent. Devices with motion sensors, such as the spirit of sprinkler, detect an intruder's presence and fire a blast of water at it. Ultrasound devices, such as CatStop, operate on a high frequency. It's inaudible to humans, but unbearable for cats, and installation is easy. A motion sensor detects the intruder's presence, and CatStop gives off its high-frequency sound, scaring off the cat. One of the commercial cat repellents available is an organic powder called ShakeAway. ShakeAway dries the scent of the urine of predators that cats fear, namely the coyote, the fox, and the bobcat. You simply sprinkle it around the prattlmeria, and cats will avoid it. Some plants give off smells that cause cats to slight, one such plant close by the name Scary Cat. Other plants often recommended for keeping cats away from yards are rue, lavender, and pennyroyal. Better still, if you don't mind the cats being in your yard, make a sandbox just for cats. Chances are that the sandbox will serve as a magnet for cat poo. Sure, you'll have to clean it up, but at least you'll know where it is. A great way...
Girl.
A great way to prevent attracting other wildlife, such as scum, is to feed the cats on a raised platform approximately two feet above the ground, as scum can't jump. Do not feed on the ground or feed at night, as this will attract other wildlife. Other enclosed feeding stations can be built to deter raccoons, and keeping the station clean and neat will deter predators. Residents can also work with the neighbors that are providing care for the feral cats and assist them in a plan to reduce the traffic through the yards by moving the feeding station to another nearby location. The last alternative to consider is relocating the feral colony away from residents, but should only be considered as a last resort. This often does not work and is quite hassle. Also, your town could form a committee, as the city of Lethbridge did, to determine best practices in addressing the feral cat population. These best practices should focus more on animal welfare, public education, and develop a subsidized TNR program to humanely reduce the feral cat population while decreasing the number of problems residents encounter with free-roaming cats. The Animal Welfare Committee was awarded $7,000 each year for the next two years to spay and neuter two colonies as a pilot project. If all this is fine, the city will possibly continue to fund such projects as the results and data obtained will prove that TNR is effective. The city of Lethbridge also awarded $2,000 per year for the next four years to provide cat caregivers through rescues of cat food on an application basis. In conclusion, please be compassionate and reconsider this point in the bylaw by seriously considering alternative courses of action. Most people who have been hearing of this new program are currently willing to help and have helped in the past. Suffering is never easy to watch, which is where you are headed should this point in the bylaw pass. Compassion for all animals is a mandate we're praying for.
Thank you, Tia, very much. And I appreciate you giving us this package. Like our C.A.O. said, we all have this in the package. Have you got questions for Tia at this point in time? Mayor Fron.
We have one for you, though.
Tia, I have two questions. One maybe for the One Safe Animal Rescue. I'd like to know how many cats and how many colonies are feral in our town?
We're just working with one.
So, you have one colony in town with 12 animals?
Yeah, that's our average right now, 12. But when we started, it was about 35.
So, the colony is down to 12, and it's maintaining its number right now?
Yes, we monitor it, we manage it, like we... That was a caregiver, so we don't just get them trapped neutered and leave them, we continue to take care of them so we can catch the newbies that come in.
There's something I would like to add to that as well, is that there are other people who are feeding groups of cats and doing a really, really good job, but also, one of the things with that colony is you do have new ones come in. And especially in that area, we have some owners that don't spay and neuter their animals, and so that adds to our problem. But like I said, last year, we had two sets of kittens, and we got all of them, so we have no young ones up there. We have a couple of females that we believe are pregnant, and if we can catch them, even if they belong to someone, we will do what we have to do to do that. But there are other people, there are other colonies in town, but we are just, at this point, dealing with that one. Something else I'll just add quickly, too, is at one point, I was feeding some in quite a hostile area. I had people even threaten to shoot me. But what I did was, it took us time because we don't have much money, but I was able to get all of them spayed and neutered, and we sent them out to Sotted Land Ranches, but we didn't just dump them. They had a place where they could confine them for two weeks, and then we released them. And last time I talked to them, out of the eight that we placed there, they've seen at least seven, and that was three years ago. So, it does work, but not dumping them on a farm where they have been spayed or neutered, because then we have more come back into town when it gets to be too many.
You forward one, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I've just been given a sheet by Tia. I appreciate the idea, Tia, but again, why should it be at my expense to keep away cats that are not my pets, and you offered to pay? But if I put a sandbox in my backyard with seven grandkids, where are they going to head to to play?
Use the ultrasonic frequency.
I love the idea of Mr. McGregor's fence.
That would be a discount as well.
Because as a child, I read Peter Rabbit. Mr. McGregor's idea for Peter Rabbit, horse, walk.
It is an electric fence.
There you go. Thank you.
So, we got to work on each other.
Mayor Fron.
Okay, the second question then is for you, Tia. I saw the numbers that you have in your package. You're talking about a colony of 30 cats in Lethbridge that are under that program that cost $14,000.
It's $7,000 each year.
Yeah, so for two years, it's two years. And above and beyond that, you have $2,000 for...
Year, to provide rescues with food.
For the food. How many feral cats are there in Lethbridge that you know of?
Oh, boy, you're going to get a different answer from everyone.
But what's an average in your estimate?
Well, I just... TNR cats, or TNR colony, we're almost finished, but it had anywhere from 30 to 60 cats in the residential area. I have TNRed another colony that had 25, and we're not done. I have TNRed another colony that had 25, and we're not done. I'm currently working on another colony that only has six there. So our industrial park is full of them. But we've tried, as a committee, to come up with a proper head count. Unless we're going to pay our bylaw officers overtime to drive around, do head counts, or take people's word for it, you can't get exact numbers, you're never going to get exact numbers. But there is, some people will tell you there's thousands. I don't agree with that. There's probably hundreds.
So then, your organization works through donations to your organization since you only get $14,000?
The Animal Welfare Committee is, it was the mayor's panel. The mayor developed this last year to help us with this problem. It is now just a regular ad hoc committee, the mayor's no longer on it. It's city-funded. So they awarded us the 14 grand. Then they also awarded NOCA, who is a subsidized low-income spay and neuter program, with an additional $16,000 on top of their original 29. So this year, we've been awarded with quite a lot of money to deal with the problem in Lethbridge.
Counselor Barnes, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, maybe I'm just, I'm a cat lover, so don't get me wrong. I've always had cats.
You say you found a Christmas, remember?
I was going to say, I found a cat, you know, that was, oh, it's a beautiful cat. I wanted to keep the cat, but I knew that, I just can't do that. I just can't do that. I have another cat that's very jealous.
And that was Christmas.
And that was at Christmas time, and this poor cat is a Siamese-type furball. But anyways, I brought it to my house, and I fed it in the house. And it, it's obviously was an misticated cat. But I called Sherry, and I took it there, and she took care of the cat. And I don't know what you did with it, but it doesn't matter.
Well, I kept it for a couple of weeks of rawed kittens because it was Christmas. But he's been adopted, he's happy.
Good, well, a cat like that should be. And I guess the question I have is, are feral cats not adoptable ever?
Kittens after about 10 weeks can be tamed so easy, like birds.
Then shouldn't our focus be on taming these feral cats, trying to catch them?
You cannot tame the adults.
Huh?
You can't tame the adults.
They just.
If you do, if you do tame.
On adults for five years, or, sorry, then they're still feral.
It doesn't happen.
I think too, because they're tamed to me, they're not pests or adoptable, they're not.
Stay in here.
So you really can't do this.
But the kittens, you can.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, but if you get them young enough, you can.
You can adopt them. Because I think that's, you know, wherever possible, they need to be removed and taken care of somewhere, adoptable if possible.
They're not adoptable, they're scared.
Counselor, Counselor P. Way, are you finished? Counselor Barnes?
I'm not sure if I am, but go ahead, Counselor P. Way.
You know, I keep going back to the same idea, you know. I think, you know, we're having a hard time understanding. Right now, cats in Carson go to the pound, and we don't kill them. We just send them off.
That's because, because Al, he, I mean, uh.
Sure, of course.
He does not want to, I mean, for he, the biolab officer does not want to do that. He does not want to kill them. That's why it's the animal rescue that helps him be able to do his job the way he wants to do it, really. If it wasn't for the efforts of all the animal rescues in the last few years in Carson, his job would be impossible to be no-kill.
Right, so I guess the missing piece that I just am not getting here is what does animal rescue do with feral cats that are sent?
Meant to not, yeah, I see. So with ours, we've adopted a barn buddy program, and it's worked incredibly well. And we do adopt out the feral cats. And so many farmers are happy because the cats are happy, they're living in their barn. Maybe it's just a heated garage or shed or anything. But they provide food, shelter, water, and in turn, the cat gets rid of the mice.
Well, it sounds to me like we've got 13 of them that could go into your barn buddy program. Then you wouldn't have to worry about feeding them until another group comes along. And then you can move them into the barn buddy program. Maybe that's the alternative.
Absolutely.
Because they've already taken hundreds of cats from us and put them into.
Well, there's only 13 more to go.
Oh, no. We need a vacuum.
In this group.
You don't get a thing to get out of that.
Let's have a little order, folks. Counselor P. Way, are you finished?
So, yeah, I, you know, we're hearing, this evening, we're hearing quite a bit about the TNR philosophy, this trap, neuter, release. And I think that, to me, for this town at least, that seems like it would be a step backwards. We're currently participating in a TNA program. We trap them, we neuter them, we adopt them to loving homes. So I favor the TNA approach much more than the TNR approach. It sounds like the TNR approach is just put them back in other neighborhoods so they can hoop in somebody else's yard.
If your barn buddy program is sustainable, so say you have 200 cats out there, and they can take over the period of the next however many years, all of those cats, and it's sustainable, then please do that. I have, like us in Lethbridge, we haven't had the fortune of being in connection with a barn buddy program, so it's not something we've explored. I have the nipple probably about six in my time. But finding barns, like people may want so many, right? So if their program is that sustainable, then please, please work with them, and please. But they can't, their money being put into it, they're not funded. So if you fund them, that seems like an amazing solution. However, not everybody's that lucky.
Well, just remember, Tia, when you say "you," if you fund them, what you really mean is if all taxpayers collectively fund them.
Yeah, no.
And that's a bit of a burden on some of the taxpayers who just don't think that's the right thing to do with these cats. So we have to be careful, right? We have to, we have to look at all of that.
We've got a question from the delegations.
I would like to respond to that if I could. A lot of the ferals that we have released again is because we couldn't find anybody that could take them. We've sent, a lot of them have gone to Calvi for a week. They've spayed and neutered them, but they've got no room for them, so they send them back. Because Calvi does not just help us, they help a lot of other communities as well. And there is a limit to what they can take. But yes, if we could find wonderful homes, it would be great. But the reality is, a lot of those animals came back because there was nowhere for them to go. And at least now they're fixed.
Thanks, Jen.
And there's not enough good homes, good homes.
Okay, Counselor Creed.
Yes, I appreciate, you know, what you've said. And I don't think our bylaw officer excludes the TNR program. There's nothing in the bylaw. One of the things that has come up over and over again is the feeding of the feral cats. Now, in your information that you sent us, you do mention, don't feed cats on other people's property, or you says, you know, if you're going to feed them, feed them on your own property. Or at least on property you have permission to feed them. So you agree with that?
I do.
And you also talk about, you know, if you're working with a colony of feral cats, that they should be monitored.
For sure.
They need to be monitored. And I understand that at least Sherry does work with Lloyd with her group. And so they are, so let me just read what it says about feeding cats in the bylaw, because I think there's some misunderstanding, and then I want to just clear this up. This says intentionally feeds a wild animal or leaves food or attractants of any type out of doors on private or public property in such a manner as to attract or be accessible to wild, feral, or stray domestic animal unless authorized by the animal control officer or their designate. Now, maybe there's some wording that could be tweaked possibly, but it's not a ban on feeding cats, but if you want to monitor a feral colony and you totally unrestrict the ability for people to feed cats or, you know, leave food out for wild animals, I mean, do you agree that, you know, feeding wild animals is a problem? I mean, have you ever been in a national park, that you see signs?
I wouldn't feed a wild animal that wasn't a human-created one, that whole.
Okay.
Cats are not a natural occurrence.
Okay, but they have become wild. And I'm not saying that, and the bylaw really is not saying that you can't feed them either, but it's saying that we want to monitor it. We want, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to have, you know, a feral colony, and you're going to try to do this TNR, you know, to do it indiscriminately, you know, on other people's property, how can you monitor it?
So you want to monitor it, but you don't want to assist it at all?
What's that?
You want to monitor it, but you don't want to assist.
But I'm not sure you're not assisting.
The TNR can only go so far because people only have limited funds. Like I mentioned, it took quite a long time to get them all. The right way to go in is blitz. You go in, you do it quick, you get them all done within a short period of time.
Right.
But people can't afford this.
Well, the TNR, I mean, you know, this would work with the TNR, but would it not be? I'm sure, you know, with Mr. Stewart, with his job, if people are indiscriminately feeding cats here and there, how can he do his job? If he's working with a group like he is with Sherry's group, and he knows they're feeding them, and he knows where they're feeding them, I don't see a problem with that, and he probably doesn't either, because he's allowing that. And so I think this clause in here about feeding animals isn't a total ban on feeding animals. It's just saying that it needs to be done in a way that's, you know, our bylaw officer is aware of, so that he knows where and how this is taking place. Otherwise, you know, who is it saying it's feeding skunks and foxes and, you know, bears or whatever else might be coming into town? So anyway, I'm just hoping to diffuse this comment that, you know, that we're banning on feeding.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's why I'm.
Can I just say something, Richard? We take care of our own, like we monitor ourselves. We don't just feed and leave them, we take care of them.
Yeah, we understand.
I want to caution through caution right now that we don't want to debate tonight on any merits of anybody's presentation.
No, just so that he knows that that's already that.
This is an open meeting, so that the council can receive information. We will not be passing a bylaw in any finite frame of time until we receive all of the information that we feel as a council is necessary to put a bylaw together. There is another open meeting, and those who have not had a chance to speak tonight will have that opportunity to speak about before the passing of the second and the third reading of the bylaw and making it a law. So I caution everybody that let us not debate tonight. Let's just have this as an information gathering. And Tia, thank you for coming down from the City of Lethbridge. I have one more delegation, and that's Dr. Strang. Have you got anything to, oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Well, you decided you want to talk now.
Jump up and do it.
Mine are mostly just questions to think about. You said numerous calls. Does that mean each call is a separate person? Or is it a finite number of people making numerous calls?
Oh, we've had numerous calls, both to the office and to Mr. Stewart himself.
Is that, as you say, if it's a particular area, then focus on the area?
No, it's all over, because I've had, I, last summer, I had Mr. Stewart come up, and I think he took six or seven stray cats off my deck. Across the street, there have been 17 or 18 cats. So I'm in an area in the central location, you know where that's at.
Yeah, I do.
Yep, and so it's all over the community. And there are calls from like Mr. Turner, as presented, that they're in their flower beds and in their gardens, stuff like that, and in their lawns. And so this has come to a head, and so as a council, we need to address it.
Okay. Feeding feral cats is not the cause of the fox issue, I'm sorry. It's a person in town who fed them, hand-fed them, and created abnormally large-sized litters from year to year. And that's where your foxes came from. I have a cat that will not let a fox on the property. I have a cat that chased the skunk away. He just, he thinks he owns the place.
It's a bomb.
I don't know. How is all your information disseminated? I don't get the paper.
Do you go online?
Not very often.
Yes, it is on our website.
But I don't go there.
And you can watch us on YouTube also.
Oh, that would be thrilling. Then I would have to collect the autograph. I'm just thinking, with something like this, that has a lot of emotion attached to it, would not a handbill or something like that work?
We're, later on this evening, as a council, we're discussing a communication policy. And we'll be discussing that communication policy and how we're disseminating the information that we receive at council and the delegation stuff, and we'll be dealing with that tonight.
Read the cat fanciers license. That's going to penalize me because I took four cats off the street that somebody dumped at my end of town. I've got them neutered, they're fed and well taken care of. However, they do, when it's a nice day, like to get some fresh air, just like anybody else. And so I think I'm on a fixed income, I'm retired. Cost becomes prohibitive. And I know there's people on fixed incomes that are not even close to as well-off as I am, which really makes the cost prohibitive. And I'm beginning to feel a little over bylaw with having to have 13, item 13. Gives me some cause for worry, I think. I'm sure I like that, worded the way it is, and number 18. Can you suggest some changes? Ask a vet if you want to know about me, they know I take care of my animals. I don't feel I need somebody picking in my pocket every time I turn around or looking over my shoulder every time I turn around with every portion of my life, and I'm starting to feel that way.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate, because laws are written not for those who follow the law, but in general, for those who won't.
And what I see here with some of the items, you're punishing those who are breaking the law.
I understand what you're saying.
And this is why we're having this meeting, Deb, so you're aware of it. This punishment issue is not there. I'm going to tell you that. Council will be, council will look at that very seriously.
Because, you know, I look at what I have for neighbors, and I'm mostly open feelings.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Deb.
I did print off the entire bylaw, and then I made a few points on it. The intentional feeding of animals. I've lived in Carson for 45 years, and I've only ever had a house cat in the house, one cat, and I've had probably two dozen cats. But especially since I moved to the acreage, they like being outside. My neighbors have a cat, they like being outside. They come around, and it hasn't been a problem. And I don't see why people should be restricted from putting food outside to feed their outside cats or dog. When I had my sheep, I had an outside dog, of course. And of course, the cats had access to the dog's food, which was in a nice sheltered barn, and they all got all the spots. But I think that's a restriction that shouldn't be there, that putting food outside. When we get to number 15, the five mature cats on a premises, that's an arbitrary figure. Where in the hell did you get that from? And why didn't you make it 15? There's people that keep a whole lot of cats and do just fine out of it. There's people who keep two cats, and they're a royal pain for the neighbors. Number 18, I think that's getting iffy. Giving a bylaw officer permission to go onto your property, into your barns, into your sheds, under your patio and stuff like that. Some people are not going to like that, and they just might take it to court. There's way too much on here about euthanizing. I think you should reduce that to one sentence. We don't euthanize in this town, period.
Good for you.
Disease control was alluded to. It doesn't say anywhere here that. That, it doesn't say anywhere here that a horrible disease is grounds to euthanize a cat or a dog. The only one that I'm aware of is rabies, and that, the town has no say in that. When we get over to number D on twenty-five C, that's a district veterinarian, not a regional veterinarian. And that's federal law. You suspect rabies, you lock up that animal, and you call the federal vet. You don't call the bylaw officer, you don't call the local veterinarian. Maybe you call the local veterinarian because he happens to have a facility that's secure enough to lock up that animal, but that immediately jumps to federal law, and the district veterinarian's the guy that kicks in there. There's been some talk about these fees. Why is fifteen dollars for a license better than five? Why does the town think they need to get fifteen dollars? Is it gonna make, it sure as a dickens isn't gonna make more people license their cat? And the differential of ten bucks, whether you do it in January or later in the year, I guess there's some rationale for that. Some of these other fines in here, if they're not wearing the license, seventy-five dollars. Why? Some cats don't do well with a collar around their neck. Cats that are outside go under things, get caught on things, if in fact is a hazard to the cat. And most of the rest of these fees here, I noticed, if the cat happened to kill a human, it's ten thousand dollars. That's ridiculous.
Never heard of that one before.
Talking about the cruger that was in my backyard?
It just, some of these fees just don't seem very reasonable, in my point of view. When I was in business, I tried to work with the group here and spay and neuter what I could, but for the last eight years that I was in practice, from two thousand and two on, which was pretty much quite a big part of the animal rescue tenure here, I was operating a business by myself, trying to get what I could do done, trying to charge a reasonable fee to everyone, and a better fee, a lower fee for those in need, but you did have to keep in mind that I was in business, I was trying to make enough money that I could eventually retire. And I didn't always appreciate the implication that I was charging too much. And I told a number of people who complained, boy, you charge a lot. That sure is a lot of money. I said, you just wait till I'm out of here. And all of you, every single one of you that's been to the veterinarian since I left there can attest to the fact that I was right. You'll pay more than you do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Strang. Dr. Strang, I've always appreciated your input on most things that you decide to input on, and I appreciate it tonight. We have heard a lot tonight, information tonight, and we, as a council, appreciate your input. There is no timeframe, I have said this before, for the passing of this bylaw. It is gathering information that we need to be very concerned about, and we are concerned about. We appreciate your comments. We will not be debating this, the merits of any presentation tonight, okay? This has been an information gathering thing. We will not be going into a second or third reading at this point in time. That will be left up to the council to decide what has happened in that situation. But there will be another information gathering night before we put a bylaw in place.
Counselor Barnes?
I'm gonna suggest that when we do gather information, maybe you could bring some suggestions that would help, because we're really about receiving suggestions, and that's how we did the dog bylaw. And we got a lot of suggestions, which helped us make a good dog bylaw. And that's what we wanna do here, we wanna be fair to everybody. And I wanna be fair to myself, because I love cats too. And so I think that if, it's not just come with complaints, let's come with some suggestions that we can solve these issues, and I think we'll all be happy. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes.
Can I address that, please?
Yes, sure.
Because we have done that. We've said Jeff, lots and lots of information, wonderful information, on examples, guidance, and advice, and we've done it, and groups have done it, and different ones like Winnipeg and Medicine Hat, and those ones, Jeff, they were really good. And that's what it all is, advice and guidance, to help you make some decisions.
And I appreciate that, we all appreciate that very much, but there are people out there too that aren't the cat lovers that you are, and there are people who see a problem. Neil has attested to some of that. And I'm not gonna tell you, because I love cats, that I haven't had problems with my neighbor's cats, right? My cat's not perfect, by any means, but I, a lot of my neighbors tell me how much they appreciate my cat, because we don't have mice in our neighborhood. I watch my cat catch them lots, but we have to appreciate, there's more than one side to the story.
Right.
And I think everybody needs to look at that, and the other people on the other side, they need to bring some suggestions too, and we can come to a consensus, that's what it's all about.
Let's do a summary real quick. Counselor Creed?
Well, I was just gonna point out that it's important for all of us to remember that while we're discussing the specifics of the new cat bylaw for Cardston, that we have an existing animal control bylaw. And, you know, I appreciate Mr. Stewart's efforts under that existing bylaw, and I appreciate also that he has brought to our attention some deficiencies in the existing bylaw that, you know, maybe need to be addressed, which is why we're addressing them now. So we definitely appreciate all the input, but just remember, we're not creating anything new, we're modifying an existing animal control bylaw, and we're just taking the cat portion of that and putting it into its own separate bylaw, trying to be very clear. And frankly, you know, I like some of the changes we've made, I agree there are definitely things in this, again, this is just a draft, right? So in this draft that has been proposed, that we've all said needs to be reconsidered, and that's what we're doing here tonight, so.
Thank you. Counselor Evans, do you have anything?
No, at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Barfus?
Not at this time.
Counselor Creed? Mayor Crohn?
I just would like to thank you all for coming, and you fulfilled exactly our expectation, which was to obtain some feedback and some ideas, and I truly appreciate all what was given to us. And Tia, thank you for all you did, and the group from Calgary, thank you so much for all you do for our town. And Sherry, thank you for the Home Safe Animal Rescue. And I really appreciate our bylaw officer who works with you and try to do the best to adhere to the policy council set five years ago, which was no kill. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, everybody that has come tonight and addressed their concerns. Both sides have been heard. There will be no motions made regarding this for a long period of time, and nothing will be done today. This is an open meeting, you have an agenda in front of you. If you wish to stay, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the council. But at this point in time, then I thank you for your presentations.
Can we take a short recess?
Yes.
Five minutes? Counselor Barfus?
I'll have to recess for five minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.